Well, it is seven o'clock and we want to honor everyone's time tonight. So we will go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone who's joining us from home. Thank you for being here. My name is Michelle Stadley and I'm the president of the Silver Falls Education Association. SFEA is a local chapter of committed and experienced educators serving the community of Silverton, Oregon in the Silver Falls School District. We represent over 90% of the district's certified teachers, counselors, and specialists. On behalf of SFEA, I would like to thank you all for your desire to serve our local community as a voluntary school board member. As educators, we feel this position is one of the most important civic responsibilities you can accept. This forum is an opportunity for our educators and community to get to know you and pose questions in which you'll have the opportunity to respond by sharing your values and ideas. Our educators and community members were asked to submit questions. These questions have been consolidated and sorted into specific categories. Of the questions submitted, SFEA has chosen some to be answered in this forum this evening. To honor everyone who submitted questions, the questions not asked this evening will be shared with the candidates and they will have the opportunity to respond by Tuesday, April 27. Once again, I thank you all for participating in this important event. I would now like to introduce one of our SFEA members and Silverton High School's choir teacher, Cole Haley Valenzuela. Mr. H has graciously offered to be this evening's moderator. Thanks, Cole.
Thanks, Michelle, and hi, folks. Good evening and welcome. I want to take a moment to share with you all and the viewers the process for this evening's forum. The event is scheduled to end at 8:30 PM. During this time, we will begin with the candidates giving a two-minute personal introduction. After introductions, we will proceed to the forum questions. Every candidate will have two minutes to respond to each question. A 30-second time reminder will be given to each candidate. We ask that all candidates to respect these time limits. The questions for tonight's event were submitted by the community and SFEA members. SFEA has chosen nine questions from those submitted. The questions reflect a variety of topics. We will ask as many of these questions as possible within the timeframe of the evening. No new question will be asked after 8:15 PM to respect everyone's time. The candidates will have, the candidates have been grouped together by board zone in which they are running. For each question, the zone group will rotate the answering, the answering order, and each zone member will alternate whose answers first when it gets to their zone. So from here, we'll go on to introductions. All right, so we'll start with Matt.
Thanks, Cole. Happy to be here tonight. Hi, everyone. My name is Matt Guyton, and I'm happy to be running for the Silver Falls School District Board. So a little bit about me, I'm a second-generation Colombian. My parents both immigrated here back in the late 70s. My dad got here, swept floors in Pierwin Imports until he retired 25 years later at Vice President of Store Operations, Sales, and Support for North America. And I've followed the same path in the business background. Met my beautiful wife, Laura Gyo, in Seattle, Washington. We've lived around the US prior to her meeting, to meeting her. And I have two kiddos, Mark Twain Elementary, Cecilia, and Mario, both ages five and eight. And one of the things that really drew me to Silverton when we moved here is just this aura of civic duty and volunteerism particularly. I coached my daughter's basketball team a couple of years ago, and I'm currently coaching my son Mario's T-ball team. And I thought, what more could I do to give back? Public service was my calling, and I saw this position open up. So I am so proud to be running here and particularly for all the endorsements in the community. I have over 200 now that are getting behind my campaign, and the community is really the one that's speaking to me that they really want me to do this. So happy to be here. Thank you all, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, Matt. Matt?
Hi, my name is Owen Von Flue, and I want to say thanks to the SFEA for putting on this forum tonight, the work that went into it. Thank you very much for that. I was born and raised here in Silverton on a dairy farm just outside of Silverton near Evergreen School. My wife Jill and I, who many of you know, used to teach English at the high school. We have a blended family of nine kids, six of which are currently in the Silver Falls School District. Over the years, we've had kids at Bethany Charter School, Butte Creek, Pradam, Evergreen, Robert Frost, Silverton Middle School, and the high school. From 2011 to 2015, I served as a director on the school board, at which time I moved out of the zone and there was no opportunity to rerun. So I've been a few years out of that service, and over the years, I've served on a number of board committees. My family is a sports family. We do quite a bit of that, and most years I'm coaching in baseball and football here in the youth sports programs. I attended Silverton High School as well as Evergreen Elementary School, K through K through eight. Actually, at the time I went, it was first through, first through eight. After that, I went to Lewis and Clark College for a year in Portland, and then I received my degree in economics from Pacific Lutheran University near Tacoma. And then after that, I attended law school at William University, and for the last 15 years, I've been practicing law and running a building and development business here in the Silverton area. So I really feel like I didn't accomplish everything I wanted to accomplish in the four years I spent on the school board, and that it's a long process of learning that would be really wasted if I, if I didn't come back and, you know, serve another four-year term.
Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Jennifer?
Jennifer, you're muted.
Thank you. So I'm Jennifer Trager. My, I am spouse to Matt, and you know, this event is usually held at the high school. And if we were there, I would have walked down the gym hallway to find his picture featured there because it takes me back to 1991 when we met and Silverton became my home. I'm mother to Grace, a sophomore at Silverton High School, and to Quinn, a fourth grader at the Community Roots School, which is a K-8 public charter school authorized by the Silver Falls School District. Education is my life. This is my 24th year in the Woodburn School District. I started as a high, a high school history teacher and then transitioned into coordinating the Talented and Gifted Program. I'm now at the elementary level coordinating tag and the English Language Development Program, and I teach in those. I'm in my 40s now, and in my 30s, I spent my spare time starting two Montessori schools because I appreciate how the approach fosters hard work, responsibility, and independence. And so why am I running? You know, I tell my students periodically, I want you to have a good life. And it's the same for all of the students in the Silver Falls School District. And I believe in the shared goals of the district, and I want to achieve them. In addition, this past year has revealed so many stories of staff and community members who have significant, who have significant hurdles in their lives, yet they show up every day being excellent for our children. And that reminds me of something my husband says, "In our family, we do hard things." So they have inspired me to come to you once again to ask for your consideration to continue to serve as a board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Stephanie?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Monte, and I have lived in the Silver Falls School District for the past almost 10 years with my husband on our family farm where we have four kids, two of who are at Pradam Elementary and two are at the high school. And I started working in the kids or volunteering in the kid, my kids' classes when they started school. So for the past 11 years, I've been in Pradam and also at Central Howell a little bit. When my youngest started school, I started subbing as an aide for our district, so was able to be in Central Howell and Evergreen and Pradam. And after he started first grade, so for the, for four years, I was able to actually work as a part-time aide for Pradam, working with first to eighth graders, and I just love math. So that is what I worked a lot with, a lot with kids and helped individuals one-on-one and small groups. And I've always been passionate about helping students learn. From high school on, I've been, I've helped in after-school programs and mentored and tutored youth in all different kinds of organizations. And I just, I still just have a love for learning, and I love helping others to learn. I never thought that I would be running for school board, but I just, our passion for our students is really what has led me to want to do this. Over the past couple of years, things have just, our, our whole community and nation is very polarized. And so I think I just want to help keep us focused on our students. I want to set aside the things that drive us apart and focus on our goals and the things that will bring us together. As a district, we have a lot of catching up to do after COVID and the fires and then the ice storm, and it's been a rough year for everyone. And our teachers and staff have done an amazing job being creative and finding ways to bridge the gaps that were created by comprehensive distance learning. And as we return to full-time learning, which hopefully is sooner than later, there'll be a lot on our teachers' plates. And so as a community board, I want to help support come around them. So thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Stephanie. Erin?
Well, good evening, everyone. My name's Erin Cook, running in Zone Five for the school board, and just want to say thanks again to the SFEA for hosting this event, allowing us to have time with our community amidst some struggles and being able to get all together, but at least we can do it here via Zoom. So I appreciate all the effort that went into tonight. So a little bit about myself, I grew up in Kaiser, so moved here full-time in 2003. My wife actually lived out here, starting in 1994 after high school. So my tie to Silverton was when we met, and we've been married for 22 years almost here in June. We have three wonderful kids, Abigail, Benjamin, and Elizabeth. Abigail is a Fox High School, Silverton High School graduate. She graduated in 2019, studying right now abroad, and hopefully will be home here in the next month. She's studying at the University of Dundee in Scotland. My son Ben is about ready to graduate here in about six weeks, so big excitement for him. And then my daughter Elizabeth is 13 and an eighth grader at Evergreen, and all three of them grew up going to Evergreen. So a little bit also about my service in the past, I was also on the board from 2015 to 2017. I also was appointed to the Silver Falls Budget Committee after serving on the board from 2018 to 2020, and I served as the elected chair each three of those years. I've also served on the District Strategic Visioning Committee in 2018 and 2019, and I'm currently serving on the Long Range Facility Planning Committee.
Thirty seconds.
Going on. Above all, kids are the reason why I'm serving and why I want to serve. My first commitment always will be to our students. I'll put their, their wellbeing front and center in every decision as a board member, and then also my commitment is to you, the community. You've elected to represent, me to represent you, to be your voice, to listen to your input, and ensure the best educational experience for each and every one of our students. And I appreciate the time tonight and look forward to more questions.
Thank you, Erin. And Melissa?
Hi, everyone. I'm Melissa. Thank you for this opportunity. Just a little bit about me, I'm a wife, I'm a mom of five, and I'm a lawyer. I grew up here in Silverton. I have deep roots here. But you can find out a lot about me on my website, social media. So right now, I want to talk to you about why you should elect me to the school board and what I'm going to do, what I bring to the table. So first, I have a deep commitment to this district. I am invested. I have skin in the game. I've got five kids. My youngest is only three, so my kids will be in this district for the next 15 years. But I'm also committed to your children and to the community's children. All my life, I've loved doing things for kids, giving back, volunteering with kids. Even in my wasted youth as a business lawyer, I still volunteered with kids. And when I finally woke up and realized that business law was not for me, I went to work at an nonprofit that dealt with child abuse for over three years. Next, I will bring objective and critical thinking to the board. As a lawyer, I'm trained to gather and research, gather the facts, research, get all the data, and then apply law and policy to that data to make good arguments and find better solutions. So that's what I would do at the board. Third, I'll help the board work as a team. My personal strengths are communication, understanding people, and strategic thinking. And I also love problem solving. So I'll help, I'll use those skills to help the board understand one another and come to consensus more often, which I think would be a really good thing for the board to do. And finally, three things that I will do if elected specifically. One, I will hold the superintendent to a very high standard, but I'm going to hold myself and my fellow board members to even higher standards. Two, I will be present, really truly present. I will visit the schools. I'd like to attend staff meetings. I want to interview the teachers. I, I don't want to just talk. I want to listen, really listen and really hear. And I want to hear the good, the bad, and the ugly. I want to know what's working and what's not working for our kids. And three, innovation. I'd like to go visit other school boards and see what they're doing that's working and it's good and bring it back to ours, what other districts are doing. We have a great district, but we can make it better, and that's what I want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Here we go. We come to our first question will be the same answering order as our introductions. Question one, how do we address the infrastructure issues at Silver Falls School District's aging facilities? First, Matt.
You're muted, Matt.
Thank you. Clearly, this is a big issue that we need to address. I'd say it's an issue that should have been addressed in, in previous years. If you look at the middle school, it's dilapidated. It's literally a quarter of it is condemned. And, you know, when you're trying to create a safe, welcoming environment for students and teachers, the district really doesn't get that impression when you have schools in that sort of shape. And it's not, it's not something that's just specific to the middle school, but there's other schools that are facing similar problems. Bonds have been passed in the past. They've primarily been Band-Aids for the problem. I think people are looking at this from a little bit more of a short-term perspective as opposed to a long-term investment in the community in and of itself. I think what some people struggle with, particularly those that don't have children or involved in the district, is that they don't realize that by having a thriving district that's a safe learning environment, particularly with good infrastructure, will raise up the entire community of Silverton. Real estate prices will go up. It'll attract more people to come to the community, but most importantly, it's the best type of learning environment for the kids and the teachers. So we have to pass a bond, and we have to pass a bond where people think big about how all the schools in the district can see this as a win situation for themselves. And that's what I plan to do as a board member. This is planned to do with, with a board member, with the rest of the board. Should I be elected? And just address this issue because it is, it is something that, it needs to be addressed immediately. Thank you.
Owen?
Thank you. I agree with a lot of what Matt just said. I believe that we need to pass a bond and make a community investment into our school buildings. When I was on the board, we made an effort to pass several significant bonds that failed and then learned a lot in that process. It was very disappointing to spend all the time that we did and to do all the community outreach that we did and to be so often met with people who were still uninformed and who were still angry about what happened with the construction of the, what we've called the new high school, even though it's, you know, no longer a new high school. But we do have significant building issues, and I think first and foremost is the middle school. So I completely agree that we need to make, it's time for our community to make an investment in our school buildings. And our outlying schools frankly haven't changed a whole lot since the time that I attended Evergreen Elementary School. They're, they've been Band-Aid, they've been put together. Some schools are better than others. I know that there's been comprehensive review of those buildings and what's needed, and it's just going to take the community to come together, and I think it's going to take the board to lead that process of bringing the community together in a unified effort to get our buildings up to stuff for our kids and for our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Jennifer?
Well, I can relate this to my personal experience. We just returned to in-person instruction at the school that I work at, and we also returned to a new wing to our building. Construction had just started when the pandemic broke out, and it finished in time for our kids to walk into a brand-new wing. And my hope for them on that day was I hope that they feel that their community values them. We desperately needed a new wing. Half of our students were, well, I don't need to go into details, but I look forward to the Long Range Facility Committee's recommendation that's going to be forthcoming. I think it's time to plan for a bond. I'm sure that there are expenditures that need to be planned for in every single school, and the school that I think needs the most attention is Silverton Middle School. When you tour that school, or when I toured that school, I can't imagine a sense of community there because it's so spread out. And then when I imagine, you know, we do these drills for all sorts of things in school, fire drills, and one of the things that we, the drill signals is secure the perimeter. I cannot imagine securing the perimeter of Silverton Middle School because everything is so spread out, and to get from one place to the other, you have to go outside. So I think it's time for our district to step up for our kids. I expect that a bond will, you know, have something in it for all of our schools, and it's time, it's our generation's time to step up.
Thank you, Jennifer. Stephanie?
I am in agreement with all of, all of these guys. They, the middle school really needs attention, as, I mean, other schools do as well, and I've been watching the Long Range Facility Planning Team, and I think they're doing an excellent job identifying all of those needs that all of the buildings have. And I think that I value looking at history and seeing what didn't work to pass old bonds because that's what's going to have to happen in order to get a new middle school going. So I think the board needs to be create, find creative ways. Owen said that there was already a lot of community outreach the last couple of times. So I think just full transparency of the whole process and exactly what things are going to cost will help, but also to have a really diverse board that represents our community, like all our communities, while I think would be helpful in getting a bond passed. And just really showing by each other that we all care about all of the students in our district. And so, yeah, starting there and really putting some emphasis on the middle school, the history of the bonds. When they failed, there was a lot of things put in there. The ones that passed were very direct for one item, so I think that's something to consider, which, yeah, there, that's a big complicated process, but I think we're on the right track with our Long Range Facility Planning Team.
Thank you, Stephanie. Erin?
Well, our district's, our district strategic plan, you know, the third tenant of that is, is our, our district facilities reflect the, you know, our high-performing district, and we all can agree that they're just, they're not there. Our academics are excellent, but our facilities are aging. I think there's three things that need to be done in this, and number one is planning. Myself and both, and Melissa as well, are, we're both on the Long Range Facility Planning Committee, and I think the old adage of if you don't have, you know, if you, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. And I think we have to have a very succinct, targeted plan to, number one, address the middle school because that's the one area that we all know needs the biggest amount of improvement, but we also have to include every other facility in the district, and we can't leave any of them out. We have to have every one of them included because every one of them has deferred maintenance that and other expansion items that need to be taken care of. So number one is plan. Number two, we need to share that plan with our community. We have to be deliberate and communicate, communicate, communicate to everybody so everybody understands what's in that plan, gather feedback. Do we need to adjust that plan? Do we need to add to that plan? We need to make sure that everybody has the whiff of the what's in it for me, and everybody understands that because in the end, we need to have everybody on board in order to ultimately, and this will be the third step, would be to seek a bond. Now, I don't think we can go to number three until number one, number two are done fully and completely in that order. But again, we need to have everybody on board. If we're going to go do that, we have to look at timing. And above all, I think we need to have our kids back in the building before we can do anything with a bond. So, thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Melissa?
I agree with a lot of that. Two things I want to kind of address. First is, yes, I'm on the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. We've been doing this for almost two years now. And just recently, we've, we've kind of taken that big information of all the facilities assessments, and we've been looking at the details. What are the priorities? What do these schools need? We decided months ago that the middle school definitely is first, and we actually decided to think about a month ago that looking at replacement or improvements, we're going to recommend to the board that we replace the middle school. We've got a great plan. It's going to be beautiful. So that's our recommendation going forward. Then we turn to the other schools and just, we started looking at the deferred maintenance list, and it's incredible. And to be honest, the priorities, we've got different categories of priorities, and we're going to have to think bigger. We're going to, we're going to have to think real big because just the ADA, just to make all the buildings ADA accessible is going to cost us $1.5 million. That's a lot, just for ADA. The roofs on all these buildings, that's priority one, to keep the kids safe and dry, right? The roofs, that's, that's five and a half million dollars. So those are just things that are just keeping the kids warm and dry. It's not even doing anything for the fact that we have 11 buildings, three of them built in 1928. Do we really think that all of these buildings are going to be around for the next 100 years? Probably not. So I'm very fortunate. It's wonderful that the committee is going to be looking at not only a 10-year plan, but a 20- and a 30-year plan, so we can really lay out what we need to do with each building and how we can get it done. The second thing I wanted to briefly say is that I also was able to attend the OSBA Bonds and Buildings Workshop about a year ago, and it was fantastic. We learned about marketing and so getting specific problems out to people and then also celebrating the successes that we've had as a district with the grants and things that we've gotten to improve our facilities. That'd be really important to build trust.
Thank you, Melissa. Here we go. Next question. Question two, who would you consider to be underrepresented groups in our community? What will you do to support equity and inclusion for these groups? What will you work to change? First, Stephanie.
Wow, where do I start? I'm waiting for that list. Thank you, Michelle. I think our district is doing a really great job at the moment, working on getting policies to make sure that with COVID right now, the gap that's, that's there, it creates so much difference in learning ability. I think first off, we do need to get the kids back in the building because we can't see those differences. We, we can't really do anything about equity unless they're in our, in our buildings. I think that getting kids to have ownership in their schools and feel connected will help with that equity. I think building strong communities where we really value one another and build each other up starts in the younger grades, but it also goes up to the older grades. I was speaking with someone just about that, our bilingual students, some parents who can't speak Spanish, and just simply getting their, their report cards in Spanish would be something that would be, I mean, it seems easy enough to do. So small things like that can help our, all of our families, whether their English is their first language or not, can, can feel part of our community. I mean, we have a very special community here in Silverton, and And to have any, anything that would hinder you from being able to be a part of it would be something I would consider looking at and trying to, so we can include all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Jennifer?
Um, big, big question. And something that as a as a teacher, I work on a lot is looking at groups and and where our achievement gaps are. And I think that that's one thing that I bring to the table is the ability to look at data and for the accountability factor, because that is one of the primary jobs of the school board is to hold the district accountable in order to move forward on on student achievement. And we do have a big achievement gap between, you know, like our average scores and the scores of African-Americans in our district, and it's something that the district's working on. And so I I would expect that, you know, in in the future, I would be asking more about that question. And I actually just did recently. We had superintendent evaluation, and I brought that up several times as a point where I'm not willing to give my highest score until the board is looking at student achievement data and 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 being able to have those accountability conversations. So there's all sorts of underrepresented groups. You know, I care about the the kid that's in in a wheelchair that might feel different or the the child that is living in their car or doesn't have the cool shoes or somebody who just looks different and and doesn't feel like they might fit in. The LGBTQ community, I think, probably feels underrepresented. And so I think it's important that we listen to people's experiences and, you know, are willing to go in and be empathetic with those experiences and believe folks when they talk about their experiences because we can't know unless we ask. So reaching out to underrepresented groups is super important to me as well. That's something that has been on the back burner during this last year. But I fully expect that the district will move forward on.
Thank you, Jennifer. Melissa?
Thank you. Um, it is a big question with a lot of different parts. But so the underrepresented groups, I think that Jennifer really talked about quite a few of them. People of color, people with lower socioeconomic status, LGBTQ, there's a lot of underrepresented groups. So what do we do to see them? We need to really see them. We need to, especially our students, we need to know, they need to know that we see them and we we hear them. So equity is part of the question here. So equity is providing support to students, groups of students, underrepresented students that have an obstacle in their path. That's that's nothing of their of their own doing. So providing the extra support removes the obstacle, and then they can be at the same starting point, have the same opportunities as everyone else. It becomes equal. So some examples of that might be, you know, we know that there are families where kids can't, don't have enough to eat at home. Well, we know that kids that are hungry don't focus and can't listen, can't learn as well. So the obstacle that's not their fault is they're hungry. So we feed them lunch. We feed them breakfast. That removes the obstacle. Everyone's on the same playing field. It takes nothing away from anyone else. That's the important thing about equity is it it supports those underrepresented groups, but it doesn't take anything away from anyone else. I love our district equity policy.
Thirty seconds?
Our our district equity policy is fantastic. It talks about using the data on these different groups to inform all of our decision-making, which is exactly what I would do as a board member, making sure that everything's backed up by the data. And then it talks about that we provide a high-quality education, even when it means differentiating resource allocation, and that's key. Equity is moving the support where it needs to be, the extra support. It doesn't take anything away. So what I would do is focus on equity policy and hold the district accountable to that.
Thank you, Melissa. Erin?
Yeah, I I think as many have stated tonight, there are several groups in our community who are underrepresented. The one that personally hit me back last spring was was with our students of color. Back when we gathered together as a community to to protest about for the racial injustices that have been going on in our country. We heard some local testimonies of some, some of our local students of colors have been be friends of of my kids. And it broke my heart that personally, as a dad, as a as a community member, I didn't hear them well enough. Even as a former board member, I didn't hear them well enough. And so for me, in that instance, I I think with all of our students of color and any of our underrepresented groups, we just, number one, need to listen. And I even think Melissa said it great, too, is we not only need to listen, but we need to hear them. And with hearing comes action. So as a board member, I would ensure that that we have programs that fall in line with our equity policy, with our all-students-belong policy, that support of these students to make sure that they're heard and that change does happen. We have to hold our district, our superintendent accountable, who then holds the staff accountable to make sure these programs get ruled out at the local, at the local schools. To to really say we have zero tolerance for for them not being heard. And but above all, use this as an educational opportunity to to help all of our students understand that things like racism won't be tolerated here, but let's use this opportunity to help our kids grow throughout the district and understand better.
Thank you, Erin. Owen?
Well, I personally hesitate to to look at underrepresented groups or to divine people in the terms of groups. And instead, I really, I I would prefer to look at as many kids as we can. And and data makes this hard because it's easier to look at groups of kids if we put kids that look alike in groups or kids that are, you know, socio-economically alike and put them in groups. And then we lump them together and and then we try and solve their problems together. And sometimes to some degree, that that works. But I think Jennifer really said it best when she said, you know, many, many kids have individual circumstances in their life, whether it be socioeconomic, whether it be personal, their own sense of of self and who they are and whether they fit in and their quirkiness or whatever it is. They're all facing challenges. And so I think it's very important that none of the kids fall through the cracks. And so equity is a difficult thing because, like Melissa said, at its best, the term equity doesn't take anything away from anybody, right? It doesn't take anyone away from anybody else. But my degree in economics tells me that, you know, we're allocating resources. And so to the extent that we have a limited supply of resources to feed kids, we're using resources from one to give to another. So, you know, for me, I think as a school district, we we have to make sure that every roadblock that we can, that we can remove, for sure. But we also have to look at what we are taking away from other groups of kids. So, you know, for me, I I do support equity policy. I think it has to be managed carefully. I think there's a group, a strong effort in America right now that's very polarizing, that's using equity as a weapon, and I don't want to see that come to our school. I I do want to remove roadblocks, and I want kids to succeed, every kid. So I guess that that's the best answer I can give to that question.
Thank you, Owen. And Matt?
Thanks, Cole. Well, I don't see equity at all in any way as an obstacle. You know, a learning disability isn't an obstacle. Being of a certain ethnicity isn't an obstacle. And I I think that we need to take a very individualized approach on this. I mean, that is ultimately what it means to enforce an equity policy across the entire district. You know, when when you decide to deliver laptops to every single student, it it may seem that you're doing a good job and you pat yourself on the back. But what if, what if, like, 20% of the kids don't have high internet speed access? How are they going to be using those laptops? These these decisions that that are made need to really be done on a more personal, individualized level. A lot of that is just through the way that, you know, principals are working with teachers to understand what issues they're facing from their students. I've I've heard some some very sad stories about, you know, teachers that are trying to elevate their student or draw attention to some of the issues that they're facing with. And the district turns a blind eye in terms of how they could possibly support them because they're not fitting into some category in order to help them. And it it's not taking an individualized approach. You know, part of part of the groups that I think are underrepresented are are the Latino community. You know, one, one in seven kids is identified as Latinx or Hispanic. And I believe the board should represent what the district is. I I speak Spanish. I'm bilingual fluently. You know, I I want those people to be heard. And and I think it's going to, it's going to take, it's going to take working together as a community, identifying those that are underrepresented, underrepresented regardless of what that lack, lack of equity is. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Onto our third question of the night. Question three. How do you view your responsibilities as a board member to district teachers and students? We'll start off with Owen. My mistake. We'll start off with Erin.
Any question? One more time there, Cole.
So the question is, how do you view your responsibilities as a board member to district teachers and students?
I think number one is is first, I'm going to start with students because I think as board members, as teachers, as as all of us here in this community, we're we're here for the number one thing, and that's our kids ultimately. Everything else falls second. Everything we do is for our kids. So as a board member, I see that everything that I do, every decision that I make falls in line, that it must fall in line with making sure that I'm making the best decision for every kids and for all of our kids. The beautiful thing I think about all of our candidates here tonight is every one of us has has skin in the game. Every one of us is vested and interested here in the Silver Falls School District. So number one, our responsibility is to to students is paramount. That's why we're here. And I think we share that with teachers, too. Teachers are teaching because, number one, because of the students, because of the kids. It's what they love to do. It's what their passion, it's what they're called to do. And I do believe being a teacher is a special calling. So so my role as a board member, I think, was also to to know, is also to listen to the teachers. How how can, I think it was said earlier, the good, the bad, and the ugly, we want to hear it all, right? We want to help support our teachers by making sure that they have a great workplace, that they have a have a safe building to work in and that they're doing the best to support all of our kids across the district. So as a board member, I want to hear from our teachers and and understand what, you know, what can our district do better? Now, ultimately, they answered the superintendent and things had to follow command. But I just want to be a a great listener for our teachers to help improve our district to make it the best we can.
Thank you, Erin. Melissa?
Yeah, so as a board member, first is for students, obviously, is our our number-one priority. But the teachers are the ones that are, they're boots on the ground with the students. So Erin is right. We need to listen to our teachers. But more than that, we can't listen in an echo chamber. I think that in the past, that's been done a little bit. We we can't sweep things under the rug when we hear problems, challenges in our district. We need to to really listen and then take steps to improve things, meet in the middle and come to consensus because ultimately, we are all in this together. We're all in this for the kids. So consensus is really going to get us a lot farther. It's a stronger statement than, as opposed to, you know, division and things like that. So we can't sweep things under the rug, and that's what transparency is all about. I think that teachers are really wanting transparency from the district. Transparency means that everything's out in the open, and that includes challenges. You know, I think our district is really good at celebrating our successes. But transparency really requires that you also look at challenges. And challenges are a great thing because you can learn from them. And I I really want to listen to teachers and learn from them and understand what they're really going through. I think I've heard from teachers that they don't think that the board knows what it's like to be a teacher, and I honestly don't. I mean, I've homeschooled a little bit, but that's not good enough. So I'm going to go and I'm going to listen, and I'm going to interview, and I'm really going to talk to teachers and figure out what it's like on the ground. And then, you know, communication is also important here. And it's, that's about not only being clear and concise. Teachers need to hear that from us, from the district, but we need to be listening more than talking.
Thank you, Melissa. Matt?
Yeah, and especially on the last statement that Melissa just said about listening more than talking. I think that that's where it all starts from, really. I mean, you you in order, the responsibility lies in really understanding the struggles that students and teachers are having. And that goes by visiting all of the schools, seeing what's working and what's not working, being able to bring ideas. And more importantly than anything, I think, as a responsibility, is keeping the superintendent accountable. I think we've got a great superintendent in terms of his background of of being a principal. And we we need to pose questions as a well-functioning board that the superintendent can provide defensible answers for. And I think that's the best way that we can support the teachers and the students. We'll have our own lens on what those issues may be, from becoming immersed in each of those schools and and seeing what's working and what's not working well. Having conversations with all levels of staff. And, you know, again, I think that some of the things that we need to hold the superintendent accountable before, how many complaints related to teacher instruction were submitted by parents of students and analyze that data? I think working together with the board and in designing some really well-thought-out questions after doing, you know, some initial audits on the circumstances of the district, we can pose some really provoking and thoughtful questions that are going to lead us to solving some of the larger problems that we're faced with. Ultimately, our responsibility in all of this. Thank you.
You, Matt. Owen?
So strictly our responsibilities as a board member to the teachers and students, I mean, is first and foremost, again, I'll reiterate, to be advocates for the kids and to look at, you know, their interests when we're considering policy hiring. But what I what I'd like to do as a board member is to try and really improve the relationship between the board, the teachers, the administration. I think that we are all in this together. We all, I know, have the best of intentions. And I think, sad to say, that there's been some controversy in the past or some some bad feelings in the past. And I'd like to get past that and, you know, even and and recognize that even though we might have different opinions, we share the same goals and we, you know, are good-hearted people. But I think it's the board's responsibility to provide facilities. I will go right back to that. I I feel like, you know, as a teacher, I would not want to work in a second-rate, third-rate, fourth-rate facility. You know, you spend a lot of your day there, a lot of your life there, and, you know, that has a big impact on your well-being, students and teachers. So I feel like that's a spot where we can really make a difference. And I also feel like the boards, my my job as a board member is to listen, to be available. I remember last time I was in the board, somebody asked me how I, how they find my phone number. I said, well, it's it's hanging downtown Silverton on Main Street, my my cellphone number, you know, in like 58-point font. So, you know, I'm available. I will be available. My job is not to micromanage teachers. You guys know how to teach. My job is going to be to hold the hold the superintendent accountable to the goals that we've set. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Jennifer?
I've got a lot of ideas floating around here, so I'm gonna do my best. I am a teacher and so that gives me a unique perspective. I actually support teachers as well. And one of the things that, you know, I, I strive to do every day is to support teachers because they can't support their students if they're not supported. So that's my point of view as, you know, an educator. How that relates to the board is, you know, a, a little bit different. I would say first and foremost, we evaluate the superintendent every year. And that is part of the evaluation criteria that we are currently using is, you know, relationships with teachers. So that is a place where we can ask the superintendent for artifacts that support the war, are, are support our job of evaluating him on, on those standards. I wanna also just piggyback on what Melissa said about challenges because i- i- and celebrating successes versus, you know, really bringing challenges to light. I think that in the past year, the culture of the district has really changed in that regard, that all feedback is, is welcome and that it's reflected on and used as a learning opportunity. So I, I'm hoping that that changes our culture for, for the good from, you know, permeates all, all parts, all employees. Our superintendent is committed to choosing leaders that teachers want to follow. And I think that's really key, that teachers have been given input into the process of hiring the new teacher, new, new principals. And I find that to be super refreshing. You know, looking back at the strategic plan, which I fully support. If you look at it at the, at the bottom of, okay.
Thank you, Jennifer. Stephanie.
Yeah, so our responsibility as a board member is to represent our community. And to do that, we need to know our community. We need to know, just as Melissa and Erin were both saying, we need to listen, we need to know them. We need to be in the community, talking with our teachers, talking with our kids and putting kids first. If our teacher, we have to put our teachers up there too. So getting to know our teachers, getting, going to visit every one of the schools, talking with teachers. I like Melissa's idea about going to the staff meetings to get to see how the teachers interact together and with their administrator. Asking them the hard questions, what's working and asking them to please be honest with what is not working. Our teachers in our district are amazing. I, my kids have loved every teacher they have had and they are all so unique and uniquely gifted to teach in different ways. And so I want to help our teachers make sure that they can teach to their strength. They can teach where they want to teach. And that they're not hindered by a policy or something we might have in place. So, um, I would like just to have that transparency and to let people know and like teachers and students and other staff know that they can come to the board, that we'll listen, that we're not gonna say any thought is a bad thought, but the, and that we're willing to, um, to really hear them and then bring it before the rest of the board. Cause as one individual board member, we have no, we can't do anything on our own. So to represent all of our areas well.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next question, question four. Educators often hear, we are a school district, not a district of schools. What does that mean to you? We'll start off with Owen.
Well, I, I hadn't heard that one before, so I think I read it. I, I'm on Facebook about once a month. I think I read that on somebody's Facebook page last week and I, I puzzled over that myself. I think, I think what that means is that as a school district, as a board, our job is not to be an allegiance to any one particular school or group of, of people, but really to the students as a whole. Maybe that phrase has been used to justify decisions in the past that were hard for one group to, to receive because they benefit a perceived other group. I don't know, it's been hard. I remember when my mom was on the school board for Evergreen School when I was probably in the seventh or eighth grade. And boy, there was always a suspicion about the rest of the district, you know, coming and wanting to, to consolidate everybody and, and that. And so there's still an element of that. I don't know, maybe, maybe that's the theme behind there or maybe I'm missing the theme. But I believe as a board member, um, we sometimes are gonna have to make decisions that are, that are difficult for one group or groups of people. I think that the strategic visioning has been really helpful to bring together and to, to put a focus on what our district as a whole cares about. So there's probably less of that. You know, it's real clear that our, our K through eight model of all our schools is, is a high priority to every, well, not to everybody, but to a high percentage of people in this district and should be supported by the board strongly. That's not always been known. It's kind of been out there. People wondered what the board is thinking and were suspicious of that. So I, I hope that that's been put to rest. And again, so my, my take is, is, you know, my responsibility is to the district as a, as a whole, to do what's right for the group.
Thank you, Owen. Matt.
Thanks, Cole. Yeah, I think that's the second time I, I've heard that quote now. And in the context of S F S D, we have quite a history. I think when every school was its own district and then the district became unified about 20 years ago. I know that that was a big challenge back then. I believe S F S D was in fact, one of the final districts to actually assume that unification. People are very opinionated about why that had to take place. And I think that we are still in a position today where it doesn't fully feel as if we are operating as a, a true district. And there's individual schools within all of them. It's a very, uh, it's, it's a really big challenge and I really think that's the heart of it. There's little things when you think about site-based planning and in terms of how money is allocated in each of these schools. I, I don't know why that decision was made and, and how that lends itself to equity. If we're bringing equity back into the picture and you're able to do site-based planning. So there's different services available to different schools based on, you know, a, a set of factors that are a little bit loosely defined. Those are one of the things I really want to understand a little bit better to help us become a district that we're up, all operating together instead of feeling as if there's a lot of independent schools working independently. So we, we need to really think about any carryover from the unification of 20 years ago. We're a new generation now and I think we can, we can solve this and, and get working a bit more unified than we have been in the past.
Thank you, Matt. Stephanie.
Well, I think that being one school district, not a district of schools, starts with, we have a common goal. We are, as, and as the school board, we help shape those goals and the, and, and then that's played out through the superintendent. All of our schools have a unique community feel to them. Many of the K eights have a family feel that, I mean, being a part of it, my kids are fourth generation at Pradam. And there is just a family feel there. And, but there's a different family feel at Central Howell and there's a different family feel at Evergreen and Victor Point and every single one of our schools. And I think one of the, something to help that is when the decision to change Mark Twain and Robert Frost to K five, I think that will help create more community within those schools. And then somehow in our goals shaping together to come to, when you see the kids all come together at the high school, maybe their freshman year, they're kind of separated by their little, their little groups, but they mesh and it's beautiful. They're, they have diverse backgrounds and, and they can support each other. So I think finding a way to, I, I think site-based budgeting is helpful and it's really wise for those schools because each school has slightly different needs. And funding for, um, one thing might not be needed at another school. So I think that's one of the wise thing that our district has done. But if we needed to align some goals, equity, that would be something I would be willing to look at as well. I think we need to continue to foster that community, find, find activities we can do to, um, to bring some of the, the communities together. I think we create a stronger one district and a one school, one district feel as well.
Thank you, Stephanie. Jennifer.
Well, the, um, the, the phrase that you mentioned, um, we are a school district, not a district of schools. That is something that our current superintendent, when he was hired, that was part of his, his interview process that came out. And so that's something that he is really committed to. And he's committed to uniting all of our unique schools through teaching and learning. So basically teacher teams working together to improve student performance, um, you know, across the district. And so that I am fully supportive of. And I think that, you know, we have a unique opportunity to think about programming. You know, music has been something that, that the board has, has been talking about for several years now. And I think music is one of those opportunities that, you know, if we think creatively, having students come together from the different schools in order to have an opportunity to participate in music programming, because you know, a full-time music teacher might cost over a million dollars for, you know, every school, if every school had one. And so how can we do something that might fit in the budget better, but that brings us all together? To me, it seems like a really good fit and something that we probably need to keep thinking about. And I think science and STEM opportunities as well are another opportunity, are, are other opportunities to bring in students from all over and to have a common experience so that they can, um, you know, feel like we're all, we're all gonna be foxes.
Thank you, Jennifer. Melissa.
So, yeah, I think that, you know, this is, as Matt said, you know, starting with the unification 20 years ago. And I think we're still in that process of trying to become one district. And being one district doesn't mean that we are all the same. We obviously have 11 different schools and they all have their unique culture and they should keep that. I was just talking with a Pradam mom a couple of weeks ago and she was talking about, you know, the families bringing hot lunch to, that's great, that's part of their culture, they should keep that. Not every school has to do that, that's fine. But as a district, we should have more uniformity in other things, including, um, as Jen was saying, teaching curriculum. I spoke with a Silvercrest teacher the other day and we talked about that there's no real uniformity in the curriculum that's being taught to our kids. And, and that I think is a problem that makes us different schools instead of one district. We should have the same curriculum, the same, so that we're all on the same level. As Matt was saying also about site-based funding, so that's, that's tricky. But I spent six years on the budget committee and I've seen a sort of a shift. As I was saying, we're, we're 20 years into unification, we're slowly getting there to one district. But I've seen the shift where we're starting to see like the technology is now more district-wide as opposed to school base in their, in their budgeting, things like that. So we're starting to get there, we can get there. One of the biggest problems, one of the biggest things in a school's budget is the staffing. It's, I think it's like 90, 95% of the, the school's budget is the staffing. That's where the biggest money comes from. And so, um, there's fear about losing teachers. I don't think anyone wants that to happen. We, we love our teachers, that's very clear. We're not gonna lose teachers. But site-based budgeting does cause inequities in programming like Jennifer was talking about. So that's can be a problem.
Thank you, Melissa. And Erin.
Yeah, when I hear that statement being made, ultimately I think it comes down to just the concept of unity, right? Or unfortunately at times a lack thereof, right? And we have to understand why people are saying that. We have to, and I don't want to sound like a broken record in saying that we need to listen better, but we do. There, there could be a theme of disunity there when, when that, when that is being said. But we need to be able to, as board members, listen to each one of our school communities to try to foster better unity within the district, to, to listen to the needs of each school, to listen to the teachers, our administrators at each site and understand, you know, why, why would you maybe not feel a part of our district in some ways? And what, and how do you feel connected to the district? So I think we need to, again, we need to be great listeners. And then as board members, we need to, to implement and work with our superintendent, implement changes. If, if for some reason, Buick Creek doesn't feel included in a certain area, how can we develop a program? How can we work with our superintendent to, to, to work with that school? To devise some programs to help, uh, help them feel more included. But again, I'll think it all comes back to being a great listener. I also do think that, you know, we need to do have, we need to have some uniformity. Uh, I think curriculum is a good one to start on and, and it needs to be some form of uniformity within our curriculum. And that's one thing I could get behind. But I do think that there are each needs of each individual building and each school community is, is different. And there needs to be allowed for some flexibility based on a, a number of different factors. That's why I think being on the budget committee for, for three years and understanding site-based funding, and that was a newer concept for me when I came onto the budget committee. But I understand how it, it does in many ways help with equity. If, if a school needs to invest more dollars into remedi- reading remediation because their reading scores aren't great. They've got the flexibility to do that. And so that's one thing I wanted to put out there just to make, make clear that I, I think that does allow some flexibility. So, thank you.
Thank you, Erin. All right, next question. Question five. How does a school board hold a superintendent accountable for decisions? We'll start with Jennifer.
I think that there are probably more, there's probably more than one way. The, the formal way is during the superintendent evaluation cycle. And it's been a key effort, or I think it's been a key effort in this last year to make sure that we have a robust evaluation protocol so that we're checking in with the superintendent multiple times a year and giving feedback. Because feedback doesn't happen just once a year. It needs to be continuous in order for people to take the feedback and, and make changes. And so that's one thing that I've been a huge proponent of this year. And I would say that, um, you know, there's that formal process. But before you get to the formal process where you're, you're checking in, you're saying, hey, this is on the agenda. We are having a superintendent evaluation check-in. The board member should have a, a conversation with the superintendent. And, and I know that most of the board members, if not all of board members, talk to the superintendent weekly and give that kind of feedback. So that's like the informal feedback that we give. Because ultimately, um, over time, all of those decisions are considered for the summative evaluation that happens in the spring. So, um, to me, you know, I've worked pretty hard to try to emphasize the importance of evaluation. It's, it's my profession and so I feel like I kind of have a leg up in that regard on, in the evaluation protocols. So to, to me, making sure that it's really clear that this is the procedure that we do, we have. And then we work the plan and we're open and honest in our discussions.
Thank you, Jennifer. Stephanie.
Yes, I was listening to that very long meeting of the evaluation, um, which I thought was wonderful. And not just for, um, everyone as a board, but for Mr. Drew, as well as for the community here, how the board thinks that our superintendent is handling all of the goals and the policies that we set before, before him. how the board thinks that our superintendent is handling all of the goals and the policies that we set before, before him. And I think another way we can help is just by having very clear and attainable goals, um, that can be measured. And so they're not vague, um, and help, that would help, that would help to see how, how they're, he's actually performing as well. Um, and I think open communication is key and being transparent. If there's any problems, going right to the superintendent and, and asking, giving, giving people the benefit of the doubt is a huge one for me. Not making assumptions based on, um, something I heard from over here or over here, but just going right, right to the superintendent, as well as, um, each other on a board, working together well, um, being transparent and honest with, with our thoughts and our feelings. And yeah, I was impressed by, by the rigorous process, but I, I, I value it as well.
Thank you, Stephanie. Erin?
Yeah, for, for the last 15 years in my professional career, I, I've worked for Johnson and Johnson in the medical device field. And, and eight and a half of those years were spent in people management. And, and while the, every, every person under my management or under in my, my team, everyone had to have a development plan. Everyone had to have a formal, uh, mid-year and final year evaluation. Those are really important, but the most important conversations that when you manage people and as the board, we manage one employee, and that's the superintendent, is to have those regular conversations with the superintendent. And as we set forth policy, as we set forth items that we've desired, uh, to, to take place in the schools, initiatives that we set forth timelines on that, that our superintendent is, is doing that. Superintendent is doing as we've, as we've directed and as we've above all asked. So I think these check-ins need to be, to be regular. I, I think they can be, uh, you know, informal if need be, if, if, if we need to, as the board discuss that. But in addition, um, as many have mentioned, the, the very rigorous, um, and open, which I appreciate Superintendent Drew and his, his willingness to have his evaluation done, done in public. Open, honest communication, right? As part of the, as part of our board commitments that we hold them accountable even in the formal evaluations. But I think beyond the evaluations, to have regular check-ins, um, that way there's never any blind sides along the way. And again, in managing people, that's what I've found to be the most successful.
Thank you, Erin. Melissa?
Um, I, I agree with a lot of that, but I, and I think where it starts is, um, clear expectations. As, as Stephanie said, and I really think that collaborating with the superintendent is what we would need to do. I think that the best supervisor-type rules happen when the, the supervisor and the supervisee, um, work together to set what the, the benchmarks are gonna be and then work together to get there. So, um, if I was on the board, you know, I, I can see, um, these check-ins that everyone's been talking about, that's fantastic. But it's not only, you know, checking in like, are you meeting these goals? It's checking in, what do you need to meet these goals? What can I do to help you? What can we give you that you don't have? That sort of thing. I know that when I was the board president of the YWCA in Salem, um, we had a new, uh, CEO at the time, similar to our new superintendent. And, um, we did, we, we had breakfast or coffee together, I think about once a week. We really, we worked together to set this strategic plan for the, for the organization together. So we knew where we were going together. And then we really collaborated on things to, together. I've also done management where things aren't going as well. And I'm fortunate to have a husband that does employment law. So I, I knock on his door once in a while and I ask him for help. So I've, I've managed employees where we've had to put them on, you know, improvement plans, which I really hope we would never have to do with our superintendent, but I'm, I've done that and it's, it's difficult. But if we start from a, a team perspective with the superintendent, I, I don't think we'd ever have to go there. So, um, that's what I would do.
Thank you, Melissa. Matt?
Thanks, Cole. So we, we need to hold the superintendent accountable by making sure we stick to the budget, uh, by making sure that, uh, he's adhering to policies that the board sets in place, uh, that we're adhering to state policies like the Oregon Health Department as well. Um, you know, I've heard transparency used a couple of times here and, you know, this, none of this position is about any single one of us, you know? This is, um, truly about representing, uh, the community at, at full. So, you know, while we can uphold, um, keep the superintendent accountable for the policies that are being said, I think that, you know, to, to echo what the, the community, um, is concerned with most, we need to create more of a communication ambassador network within our respective zones. Uh, other school districts actually have, have successfully done this, uh, bringing in community leaders to really listen what's on their, what's on their minds, you know, what particular policy are they concerned with? Or what do they see as not being executed upon and take their feedback? Because, you know, these, I, I, I've met Scott before. He's, it, confident we'll be able to work quite well together. But more importantly, th- this is, isn't what my opinion is, you know, I, I can look at something, uh, I can look at what the policies are and establish what's being followed through on and, and what not is. But I think more importantly, you know, by creating a, a community network of ambassadors, you can really, um, get better feedback and, and know how to, uh, you know, address certain things that may be the superintendent. So that's my answer.
Thank you, Matt. And Owen?
Thank you, Cole. Uh, first of all, I would say that I recognize that the job of superintendent of a school district is one of the hardest on the planet. It really is a difficult job. And so, uh, and I, I have to say most, every, every superintendent I've met, I've been incredibly impressed with. And I haven't met Scott yet, but, uh, from what I've seen, watching him, he appears to be an impressive dedicated person. I think for a school board member, you've all, you've heard from the other candidates how there is a formal process in place that the board members participate in. But I think the trick for a school board member is to work collaboratively, collegially, in a friendly way with the superintendent, but not to become friends, you know, frankly. There has to be that professional relationship where hard subjects can be addressed, where, you know, when accountability needs to occur, that, uh, he, you, you can, you can challenge somebody. And I think when people get too close and too friendly, it, uh, it really inhibits our ability to do that in a professional way. So, uh, to me, that's one of the most important things. And that's maybe one of the things that I've seen in the past where it's been a challenge to, you know, in our district, when people get too close and they have a role to play, you know, they have an important role to play. And so I just want to take the last couple of seconds to go back to the last question, say that site-based budgeting is something I'm in favor of. I think it gives our, it empowers our, um, principals and empowers our teachers. And it's a very small amount of money, um, in the, in the big picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. So we're going to finish our rotation of speakers. We want to give everybody an opportunity to start the conversation. So we're gonna end on this last question, question six. What aspects of district culture would you work to change and why? We'll start with Melissa.
Ah, I think, um, I, I think that what I would work to change in the district culture is the division. We've kind of talked about it a little bit tonight. But, you know, in the past, we've seen division between the, the, the teachers and the admin, and the admin and the board, and the board and the community. And it was getting better. I, I really think it's getting better, but I think that we can keep, um, keep improving on that. In fact, I've been thinking about that a lot lately and, and how we bring the district together. And I think that most of us think, oh, you know, what can we do to bring the district together? I, I really think that it has to start with the admin and the staff. They're gonna have to lead the community on this. I was talking to, um, a Robert Frost teacher the other day and we're talking about the transition to the K5 and, and the two K5 schools. And she was saying that she thinks that, that the, the principals of these two schools really need to work together as a team. And, you know, maybe do some team building. And it got me thinking, you know what? We should be doing that with everyone, all the district buildings and not just, you know, going to trainings together, but actually team building together, spending time together. Um, and then we can spread it from the teachers and the admin to the students. And then from the students to the families and it would just grow as we get to know each other. So we've learned, as, as an example, we've learned that we can teach virtually, right, through this pandemic. So teachers could be using groups of classes from different buildings and doing that together. Those students, we get to know each other, then perhaps we could find, um, ways for those students to socialize, you know, maybe family nights across buildings. But we can't wait until everyone gets to the high school to be unified. We have to do that starting smaller, starting with the teachers and the students. And that makes us all a Fox family and that's what will be one district.
Thank you, Melissa. Erin?
I think over the past couple of years, um, one of the issues that, that I've seen that in, in, in culture that I think continues to, to improve and I'm very grateful for is, you know, we've heard, um, you know, our, our, our teachers' union, um, had, had some, some issues brought forth and in, and in the last discussions with the, contract negotiations, there were some things that brought forth that, that I think clearly show that we can, we can do better. We can do better listening as, as a district. And, and I think with, with our new administration, I, I, there's no doubt that the improvement with, with our, with our teachers' union and the relationship there has, has greatly improved. And this is as a, as a parent and as a, uh, involved citizen member, my perception, it's improved, but I think it's just a start. Uh, I think that does need to continue and improve. And then again, comes by listening, becomes by understanding. I appreciate that Mr. Drew and, and the board has helped, uh, allow for time on the, on the school board meetings for our, our union to come and to discuss, um, their thoughts and to be heard. And, and again, I think if you have regular check-ins like that, good things can come and good lines of communication are open. And again, eliminates any type of blind sides, any type of confusion. And allows us to all work better as a district. So I think that's one issue that's come up over the past few years that I think is being worked on and addressed. And I think will, one that will continue to improve, um, and one I want to be a part of to help bridge that gap and to bridge and bridge that relationship as a board member.
Thank you, Erin. Owen?
So if I could wave my magic wand, or I guess work on the board to, to change culture, it, it would be not the culture, um, among the kids and the teachers, because what I've seen there is, I'm sure there's improvement to be made, but, but that's very good. I've been amazed. I think we have one of the best districts that there is. Um, you know, I, I sell houses every year to people who move to Silverton from all over the country because of our school district, honestly. Uh, e- every year, several people. Um, and I know there's other contractors doing the same thing. People are coming here because we have a great district. It's not perfect. But it certainly is a model and I think it can be better. I, I would like to see the culture, I think what Erin pointed to between the administration and the teachers really be healed. I'd like to see, uh, everybody not only feel like they're working towards the same page, but to just, to not distrust the motives of anybody else. Um, even, even though when people have different ideas about how to get there, they can still all have good motives. And I think that's important on the school board too, that we don't mistrust other people's motives. So I'd, I'd like to see the distrust of, of people's motives, um, be healed. And then in our community, I would like to see our communities, uh, to the extent that exists, and I know it does because we've seen it. You know, when, when we go out to a, for a bond, I guarantee you, we will see it come up. A mistrust of the board and how we use our money, you know, the public's money. And so we are entrusted with that. And I, I'd like to see that healed as well, where there's a real trust built.
Thank you, Owen. Matt?
Changing culture is one of the most difficult things to do, uh, in just about any people setting, especially in business and, and more so in a district. And the stakes are so much higher because we're dealing with the education and the future of children in business, you know, you go out of business to get another job. But, um, you know, there, there is, where I, where I, where I differ with my opponent is that I, I think we can be one of the best districts in the state of Oregon and a model in the United States. I truly believe that. But we're not there yet because every student, every decision needs to be student-centered. Every, every decision needs to be centered around the student, regardless of what school that is. I, I don't want to come across as if I don't respect the communities within the schools themselves. Uh, the, 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 um, the parents of those students that have come together and done great things individually for those schools and that should continue to be respected. But when we're talking about equity, we need to think about how we're providing resources to all of the schools. And there is great inequity in that now. When we're looking at schools that are in town, that are completely at capacity and they're not able to transfer to other schools inside of the district, yet schools are bringing in children from out of district. Uh, I, I have a lot of questions around certain practices that are built around the culture that continues to take place. The culture to be more student-centric. And that's what I'll commit to doing on this board. Uh, making sure that, um, we are taking equitable approach to everything while we're still respecting each individual school and what they've contributed today. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Stephanie?
I'm gonna agree with Matt that our students do need to be put first. And by putting them first, we need to show them that we trust one another. And I think that's one of the big, a big, a big problem in our district at the moment. Over the past few years has been trust. Um, whether it's trust between administrators and superintendent or, or staff teachers and administrators or just, um, in the community. And we need to let our students know that every school and every student is important. And, and knowing and, and creating an environment where everyone cares about each other, that we're working together. We're building other people up, even if we have an opinion that differs from somebody else, that we value that and we can value, um, each other. And listen, I mean, I am willing to admit, my opinions probably aren't always gonna be the best ones. Um, and that's okay. I'm, I can say I'm wrong. And I think that we need to really foster that kind of environment in our district culture, um, as well as building transparency to build trust. Um, when we can be open with one another, um, on the board, in administration, um, all around. That is all gonna affect our students. They're gonna follow our lead and follow our example. Um, yeah.
Thank you, Stephanie. And Jennifer?
I'm gonna answer this, um, in a, in a broad sense. Um, and, you know, polarization has been mentioned several times tonight. Um, I think in America, we may not have ever been as polarized, um, as we are now. And so I wonder what, and what is the way back to civility? And, um, you know, I wonder if local leaders need to lead the way for, uh, in order for civility to return to at the state and national level. When we can work with our, our local leaders in the best way our humanity, um, has to offer, maybe, maybe that's a pathway back. Um, we're all neighbors in the Silver Falls School District. When we disagree, we have the luxury of reaching out and having a personal conversation about local issues. Um, and that conversation will help us develop a better understanding of, of where we're at. You know, there is, it's, it's very true that more than one thing can be true at the same time. So to be able to hear people, um, who, you know, try to genuinely understand their different perspectives and the values that shape those perspectives, um, is important in order to make the very best decisions for the students in our school district. is important in order to make the very best decisions for the students in our school district. So that's 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 my answer to a change in district culture. It's it's pretty broad. But that, I think, is is what what our children need.
Thank you, Jennifer. So since that was the last question, we'd like to give one minute each to every single candidate to give their last wrap-up closing statement. We will go with the same order as we did with question six, as we do with question one. So we'll start off with Melissa, a one-minute wrap-up.
So I guess I'll just reiterate what I said in the beginning. So I have a deep commitment to kids from the time when I was a kid in high school, as a tutor, as a mentor, working with child abuse. Deep commitment to kids that will never change, and I think that that's particularly true for the underrepresented kids in particular. As a lawyer, the objective and critical thinking, looking at the facts, not letting the emotion come into decisions, I think that's going to be really important as a board member. Helping the board work as a team, again, that's going to help the culture. But also, I think that when the board works as as a team, consensus decisions are more powerful than split decisions. So if we can work as a team, we'll get we'll get farther, it will be stronger. And then three things that I'm going to do as a board member that I commit to right now. Holding myself and everyone else accountable and to high standards. Really being present and visiting and listening and and all of that, and then new ideas. I'm I'm really passionate about new ideas. Thanks.
Thank you, Melissa. One minute. Wrap-up from Erin.
Well, again, I appreciate the time tonight. I just want to leave you with, you know, my commitments overall. And and again, I reiterated that number one, it's it's our kids that I'm committed to keeping front and center. But specifically, I just want you to know that that I'll have I'll I will advocate on behalf of our students and community that, you know, our district's number one priority must be continuing on the path to a safe, full-time return to in-person learning this fall. I also am in full support of our in-town and our case school model, and it's unique. It's one that continues to meet the needs of our community. I believe our board must continue to use the strategic visioning plan and our district equity policy as as cornerstones and making great decisions for our kids. Above all, I also commit to respectful, cooperative and transparent communication with you, with my other fellow board members and with our members of staff. And finally, I, you know, resources are are tight and always precious, and I commit to making responsible and prudent fiscal decisions as to ensure all of our investments lead to the holistic success of each and every one of our students. So thank you for tonight, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Erin. One minute wrap-up from Owen.
So as a school board member, I I do want to say that I'm committed to civility in our in our local politic. I think that that's absolutely important. I'm committed to giving a full effort, being present, working through. I know full well the time it takes, the commitment that it's that it takes, and I'm ready to commit to do that. I think that one thing that came out tonight, I think difference between Matt and I, is probably our understanding or our opinions with regard to the K eight schools and budgeting and how how programming differences there have been handled in the past. My concern is that in order to make everything equitable, which might mean the same, that we would lower the bar instead of keep a high bar and to be able to provide all programs to everybody. So I don't want to see, and I as a board member, I I won't make decisions that will remove programs because they can't be provided other places. I think that's a unique aspect of our district where we have been able to serve many kids that haven't wouldn't otherwise be able to be served.
Thank you, Owen. One minute wrap-up from Matt.
Thanks, Cole. So gosh, first and foremost, I want to just say that I I want to thank SFBA for arranging this this evening. This was been great for us to speak and get everybody to know us a little bit more. You know, to what I'd like to just end up with is in no way, shape or form is this about me at all. I have a a big coalition behind me, and I'm really proud of it. People are coming out and supporting my campaign. My name is Getting Out There. I have several endorsements as well. And very respectfully, I'd I'd like to ask for your vote. There, you know, there there are certain things that I certainly disagree with my opponent. Lowering the bar for equity is one of the wrongest things that I think I've ever heard. Especially in a situation where we're trying to get everybody on the same page and and create a more individualized approach to the students. But that's for the voters to decide, and that's why we do this and we go through this democratic process. So I want to thank everybody. I encourage you to visit my website at www.mattguytom.com where you can get involved with the campaign, and I very much respect your support and and respectfully ask for your vote. Any questions, please reach out to me. My phone number's there, my email's there. I'm here, I'm transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. One minute wrap-up from Stephanie.
So our kids have had a really rough year, as well as I can't imagine the the difficulty our teachers and staff have had over this past year. And so this upcoming year is going to be really important for working together as a team. And coming together to support our kids and setting aside some of our opinions or our preconceived ideas to work together to do what is absolutely best for our students. We need to learn what the community really wants and needs and find solutions that are going to benefit everyone. And to do that, we need to ask the right questions. I my husband really doesn't like my question-asking ability. I love to ask questions and I love to listen, and I am not afraid to ask hard questions. And also looking in the right place, asking asking the right people, the right questions, I think is going to be important in in moving forward with some of our facility needs. I thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for all of those who are helping me. I am just amazed at how great our community is. Yeah, thank you. Please vote.
Thank you, Stephanie. And Jennifer. One minute wrap-up.
I guess that I will try to finish on something that I think maybe we can all agree upon, a lesson from the pandemic that we perhaps can all agree upon is that, you know, schools are the cornerstones of not only the academic success for our students, but the overall well-being of our students. And I think that mental health, the mental health of our students has definitely suffered. It was already, we we, you know, I I wish the capital to lobby for the Student Success Act, and now we have the the SIA funds that helped fund Sequoia Academy here in our school district. And that need that I I lobbied for two years ago, that I said, this is dire, we need to have extra funding to help support mental health. It is tenfold now, and and we're not going to get necessarily more money for that, but we need to really keep mental health at the forefront.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. And I think that is a wrap, but we'll bring it back over to Michelle Stadley.
Thank you, Cole. You did a fantastic job. We really appreciate your willingness to jump in and represent SFBA as our moderator. And we just wanted to give one more thanks to each of our candidates. You guys, we really appreciate your willingness to come out tonight to to make yourselves vulnerable, to you know, to express your ideas and your vision for what work as a school board member in Silver Falls School District really means. And we really appreciate your time. Thank you to our audience. Thank you for coming out and hearing from these guys. We hope that this will help you to to inform your vote. And thank you, everybody, and have have a wonderful evening.